I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is, we're resuming our regular session that we started at 6:30. It's now just about seven. And the meeting has been called, was called to order previously. And next on the agenda are announcements. And first in the announcements is annual tree lighting Memorial Park and Fire Station Tuesday, December 5th at 6:30 PM. Tax classification hearing Wednesday, December 6th at 7:00 PM at the town hall here. I am three on the agenda, minutes of November 20th, 2017.
I make a motion to approve November 20th, 2017 minutes as written.
Second. Excuse me, I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining?
Wasn't present.
I had just a couple of comments, not to change the minutes, I'll accept them as they are. But I do have further clarifications on, for discussion regarding the comments made regarding the increase in tonnage by Willaberta.
Okay.
And I think this board needs to discuss that further. That $30,000 increase was basically the increase in, represented the increase in tonnage on an annual basis.
I do have, it noted wanting a future workshop that was recommended, so I'll keep that in there and we can, we can do that.
Thank you. So, you made the motion to, Tom made the motion?
I need it, Tom.
I second it.
Rule?
Aye.
Aye. The number four, Mr. Malali, Highway Severe. To discuss the four-way stop at Providence and Central Streets. And it's snow plowing and I imagine you want to inform us on the transaction or traction sand.
Yes. So first, as you all know, the Central Street, Providence, back in March, Rhode Island DOT did their bridge over 146, which affected our Central Street going through. At that time, we made a decision to make the intersection at Providence and Central a four-way stop. This discussion had happened with our engineers during the Central Street project also. They did a traffic study, traffic count for cars, trailers, multiple axle vehicles, buses, up to four axle vehicles. They came out with a study, and this was done between Quaker Street and the Rhode Island line. At that time, in April of this year, 2017, they had 1,826 vehicles a day. 1,255 of them being cars. Two axle vehicles was 522. Two axle, six tire vehicles was eight. You had three axle trailers, you had 38. You had four axle, you had three of them. The average speed for those vehicles, because they also did a speed calculation when they did that, was averaging in the range of 30 miles an hour. You had them from 20 up to 45, but the average vehicle speed was around 30. There was talk of making the intersection a four-way stop. At our early on conversations, they said it would be tough with the community to change that intersection over to a four-way stop being the way it was with two stops being Providence Street for so long. So it happened that we were able to make this a four-way stop to stop the traffic from going to Rhode Island. It's my recommendation with the police chief's support to keep it a four-way stop to what it is today with the bridge being open. Seems that most of the traffic has gotten used to it. There are still offenders out there that are just going up Central Street and forgetting about it, but they're learning. People are coming up Central, going south towards Rhode Island. Previously, when Central Street was going straight through, a lot of cars would cut the corner short. They had a problem on the west side of Providence. So I used to see a makeshift island that was painted there trying to direct the traffic straight and coming out around the corner so, you know, people cutting the corner short would have a better chance. So at this time, I'm looking for the Board of Selectmen's support to keep the intersection a four-way stop. It does make people stop for a minute, slow down their speed, and these numbers are only going to be increased with the bridge being open. You know, this, this traffic study was done, it was done rightfully for the time, I bet if we did one.
It sounds-
The traffic would increase dramatically.
It sounds to me that those numbers were low by comparison to previous studies-
Correct.
-done on Central Street.
Correct.
Are there any questions?
Well, I've had lengthy discussions with, with you and even the police chief, and I live right there, so I see a lot of it. And, you know, I understand the reasonings, I'm not sure 100% believe that that's the best course of action. I think there's other safety items that can be done, you've got the kind of a blind curve there heading up in there. A four-way stop eventually, you know, obviously, everyone's stopping is, should make it very safe. But I don't think it was terribly unsafe previously. With the exception of, you know, maybe the speed limits of some offenders. And my feeling is that everyone says don't speed in Millville because the cops have nothing else to do. But there is still, I know they have plenty to do, but people do hit the brakes when they hit town. You know, Millville has a reputation of well-policed roads. So, you know, and I've talked about the, the island and the barrel that was there previously because that is, I just, it's well lit, it's large, I'm not 100% for it. You know, when they did it, I was like, oh, I hope you don't keep it. And I realize it might be in the next phase and whatever the board decides, but I can see both sides of it. I just don't feel that there's at any given time more than one or two cars there. You know, on occasion, you might have three cars coming up Central Street and they have to stop. But beyond that, there's not a lot of traffic stopping at those stop signs at any given time. So, you know, with that, I can go either way. And I've told you this, I can go either way on it, I just don't feel it can, it, I'm not 100% on board with the four-way stop.
One of the comments that you just made with that blind corner is, is an issue. But creating the four-way stop gives the person coming out of Providence also that chance because that blind corner can work in reverse for somebody trying to come out of the east side of Providence Street. With a car coming up Central without having to stop with a stop sign there, it does increase the safety for the vehicles.
Do we know how many accidents, do we know how many accidents happened there or have happened there?
Um, I don't have a count on accidents, I can tell you for my 20-plus years in the service of this town that I've been there more than a dozen times. They've, they have decreased over the years, but all accidents have. A lot, a lot of that has to do with the way the roads are treated in the winter and traction control and cars and-
Distracted driving.
Well, that's a new one, that's a newer one. Actually, I will say, I think one of the last two or three accidents was-
Distracted.
-there because of distracted driving on a rainy night.
Do you believe this will reduce that?
I do.
I would recommend myself personally, I feel we should keep it a four-way stop. Until, we're gonna have to take another look at it sometime when Central Street gets redone.
That, that intersection is getting entirely redesigned. What TEC, the engineering firm that we have, they've designed it to what they call tighten it up. Give it, it's gonna feel tighter, but it's still gonna be virtually the same size, but it's, it's gonna have, you know, the curving and the radius, proper radiuses in there. It's, it's going to be a legitimate intersection at that time. And, you know, going back and forth, I don't think that's what we should be doing to the people either. I don't think we should be entertaining going to, from a, you know, two-way stop to a four-way stop to, to go back to a two-way either. I, I think this is something, not saying you can never, but I think that in itself would be another accident waiting to happen.
I agree. Whatever decisions made needs to be a final-
I think right now you've got the majority of the people stopping. You do have, like I said, the people who are still getting tunnel vision just going up the street and-
You're getting more from the people coming over from North Smithfield who have been avoiding that, that intersection? You know, they've been going around hitting Blackstone or Oxbridge. So they don't know that it's a four-way stop there coming into town from North Smithfield? That's where I'm seeing most, a lot of the violations.
They haven't gotten that far yet.
You haven't gone over the bridge yet or come back, so.
We do have our flashing billboard, "Coming into town the northway", alerting people that there's a four-way stop ahead. We have two stop signs at the stop for now. There are, on every direction, there are stop ahead signs. There's signs at the intersection alerting people that it's an all-way stop, that's what they call them now, not really a four-way. They call it all-way, we have slow signs prior to it, trying to enhance-
Could we have public safety weigh in on?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I was late, I caught the tail end of the comment. I wouldn't change it back to a two-way, that would be too confusing for the public. I think there's adequate signs, I think the signs are good, I think it works. I think it slows the traffic down, especially the people traveling on Central Street. Even if you're not familiar with the area, a sign's a sign. Regardless if you drive somewhere else, that you don't know that area, you pay attention to signage. And Brian has enough signage there, I think it works, I think it's safe. It certainly reduces your speed coming from North Smithfield into Millville or vice versa, it does work. So my recommend, recommendation would be to keep it a four-way. Whereas if you go back, you're just gonna confuse a lot of people, Joe, and it could be an accident because, you know, you can't go flip-flopping and then make it a four-way in six months, so.
So I'll hear a motion to make it a four-way stop, continue to be a four-way stop.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
On the plans for the Central Street construction, are they looking at updating the signs like the solar powered with the flashing lights or any of those things in the plan for-
That at this time is not on our plan. Myself and the chief have already spoken about this. We're gonna aggressively, even prior to the construction, hopefully look for the funding for them because they're not cheap. That, that is something that we've talked about entertaining to install at that intersection with this being accepted by the board.
Those signs are great, you see more modern than Rantham and Foxborough. They're super signs, they're like Brian said, they are expensive, but they do work.
It's too bad that wasn't in the construction costs.
Well, it's, you know, a lot of that still has, in our budget, doesn't have room to change, but there's, you know, things that can still be added.
We were gonna have a slight announcement in a good, positive way for another grant that relates to our Highway Department. And this lighting of a sign would be probably a good future grant as well. And this one is in particular for Meyer, and I'll let our Highway Surveyor talk about that because we just got notified the day before, on Friday, Friday, so go ahead, you.
Well, off the subject of the four-way stop, we put in for the Meyer grant, we put in for $8,000 worth of equipment, unfortunately, but fortunately, we got a piece of that. We were awarded $2,987 of the grant for safety equipment for the Highway Department through Meyer, fully funded grant. So that was a very good team effort, handed to us by the chief. Secretary in the business office, Christina Herrick, she did a lot of legwork with it. Our town administrator put her pen to the paper to help us out and it was a great team effort, but I'm very, very proud of it. Being the first grant that I, you know, had a lot to do with, small amount, but it was, it was a good email to get on Friday.
So I'm waiting for a second to my motion.
What was, hold on, what was the motion?
To maintain it, a four-way stop.
I'll second it.
Rule?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Sand.
Sand. We got our first three loads of sand in today. Haven't used it yet, but we need to stock up. We went out with, for our traction sand, went out to bid with Blackstone, Bellingham, and Hope Dale under a regional bid. And Kimball Sand was the award winner for that. They deliver our sand to us, unlike other towns, they do a lot of picking up, so they get a different rate, but Kimball got our, our bid, so I'm sure that'll work out well seeing they've always met our expectations. Roxal goes with sand. We went out to bid with that, with the consortium, with the, basically what I call the Valley. Shrewsbury, County Shrewsbury DPW heads that up. They put it out. We actually got prices lower than we have in the past few years. The one difference is, is because it was so competitive, we have to buy 70% from the number one bidder and 30% from the number two bidder. All that has already been lined up and worked on, so that is also all set and ready to go for this year.
Is that because the number one bidder didn't have the amount needed?
Yeah, I'm not positive how it was, their numbers were within pennies of each other, so whether it had to do with the amount, the dollar amount. The good thing is, is the other community does all the legwork. They just ask us what we want, quantities and-
That's awesome.
It's all done over email, works out well.
I'd like to see regional collaboration.
Snow plowing, that's it.
Uh, yep, well, that's another thing we want to talk about. We've extended the contract which we've had with Northeast Services. The name changed a little bit from Northeast Services to Coastline Property Management. Same owner, same dynamics. Lot, you know, had to do with business practices on their end, why they changed their name, but everything on that's the same. We gave it to them for another year. With that being said, I'm gonna, myself, include myself a lot deeper into snow and ice this year with overseeing what I call quality control. I'm going to be present when needed. We've purchased a time clock, we're installing that down the salt shed. Every subcontractor that he has is reporting to the salt shed. Either myself or a representative from the Highway Department will be there as everybody is coming in and coming out. There's, you know, a little more literature that was put down to communicate when vehicles are going down, breakdowns, or somebody is going to, you know, get something to eat. I want to know, and that's a lot of things we're gonna do. And this is all to build for the future of where I believe the snow and ice should be going for the town of Millville.
What was the reason for the name change again?
The, the owner of the company had some business practices that he wanted, he changed his name with his son to the property management company. Still, like I said, all, you know, the dynamics are the same. That was his, his request.
It's the same structure.
Same structure, same, it's gonna be same vehicles.
I think it probably reflects what he's doing.
It does, you know, his Northeast Services was race cars. This is property management. This is property management. I'm sure, I'm, I know being in the business, just adding that wordage, verbiage in your title affects your insurance rates and everything. What it has to do with, but he, he approached and asked if it was gonna be a problem in changing the name.
Very good.
Also, just to let the board know that our Highway Surveyor has, has met in depth with our Finance Committee. We've been having meetings with each department as we're looking at trying to gauge where we'll be, not just within the next year, but within three years. And one of the things that we talked about was not having as much control over the snow plowing aspects related to the contract. And I will give a lot of credit to Brian because we've thought through ways in which we can really start to implement some quality indicators in this particular area in hopes that, you know, not only can we do a better job and have his eyes out on the street to see which streets are being plowed in an orderly way, which ones aren't, rather than him not having the ability to really weigh into that along with the efficiency factors. I'm hoping that that will show that we can actually do a portion of this with, with oversight and then maybe perhaps save money in the future going forward, so, because that is something that we're looking at for every single department, so. He's been active and that's one of, this is one of the things that we're trying to do in a sort of staged way and see where we go in the future for maybe a multi-year approach.
Anything else from Malali?
I think that might have been everything on our list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You stay there, chief.
Stay right there, you're next.
Yep, I almost got away.
Next on the agenda is the fire department. You asked me about this earlier in the day, I hadn't read my packet yet, I was about to, and I agree. You're on the agenda. And first, let's discuss the water tank. Water tank. As you know, the, we previously had an old water tank. The vehicle was simply too old to repair, we were spending money foolishly on it.
It says MES water tank.
Yeah, yeah.
School water.
We've had so many water tanks, so.
So we have water tank problems, okay.
The, we had a monitoring problem with that water tank. One day the level was 19 feet, next day it was 17 feet, 15 feet. So we thought we either had a leak or a bad monitor. We were told the monitor was good, so we assumed it was a leak. We checked the pipe from the tank to the school and there was no leak. So the next step was the tank, the tank itself was not leaking, so now we're looking at the monitor. We actually got a price to replace the monitor, it was like $2,600 to do that. And, and General Tell you the school department was gonna actually pick up the cost to replace the monitor. But since that meeting, we learned a few things. Unfortunately, the maintenance man for the elementary school, it was his practice every day to turn off the monitor and then in the morning turn it back on. So he was losing his calibration every day. So, why he did that, I don't know, it was his practice to do that. Allegedly, his reasoning was it was struck by lightning, the tank, years ago, and the monitor had to be replaced. So his thought process was let's turn it off-
Okay.
-and then in the morning turn it back on. So like anything else, anything electronic, it has to recalibrate to itself. So every time he turned it on, he'd read the tank and the calibration was off. So we since learned that was the reason for the improper readings. He's no longer turning off the monitor and the tank is working very well, the monitor's working very well.
If that concern continues, Mr. Barrett can advise some type of a surge protector for that circuit?
We do have lightning rods on the tank, I think there's five lightning rods on the tank. It hasn't been struck since, you know, I've been here for a long, long time, so I don't know when the last time it was struck. But that was the maintenance man's decision to do that, to turn it off and turn it on. And I don't know how it was found, that he was doing that practice, but he admitted it and solved this out.
So the good news is we saved $2,600.
He didn't cost anybody any money.
Unfortunately, even the, the tank that checked the pipe, the school department picked up that cost, it was like $700. They picked that cost up as well. So at the end of the day, it cost Millville nothing and we learned what not to do with the monitoring system, that's all. Yeah, that's good news.
And the other piece we have here is the study by the Auburn Fire Department regarding the reduction of call for firefighters, the availability of call firefighter incident. They serve as EMS. Apparently, we're in District 7?
We are.
And it said that, it says here that District 7 consists of 25 cities and towns in southeastern Worcester County. And all but one of those 25 utilize call firefighters.
Correct.
And the issue and the problem here is the difficulty with calls on the increase and the lack of availability.
I did address this back in October, I spoke very briefly about it. This is a synopsis of their study. On the bottom line, it's a nationwide problem, not unique to Massachusetts. Whereas it's difficult finding on-call firefighters. And it's not so much the calls for service, it's the training, the new training requirements. They practically have to train the same way full-timers do. They have to go to the academy for so many weeks and they're gonna graduate and then they become an on-call or a full-time fireman. A lot of people have a difficult time finding the time to go to the academy to be an on-call person. Especially when you become an on-call person, you may go, you know, weeks without a call. So then they start to think, is it really worth it at the end of the day? So this problem is, is not germane to Millville, it's nationwide. The numbers are, you know, sloping downwards every, every day throughout the nation. So, you know, they're looking for ways to solve that problem, whether or not we go back to in-house training. You know, we can do that, we can try to train in-house, so the requirements are still there to train, but you don't have to go to Stowe or Springfield to train. You know, we're looking into doing that. Uh, and simply, you know, you have to realize, we're a small community, a pool of applicants. Certainly not as great as Spencer or, or another larger community that has, you know, twelve, fifteen thousand people. We have three thousand people. So, our pool of applicants is much lower. And if we attract on-call firemen from outside of the town, then we have to consider their travel time and how long it actually takes them to get to Millville. So, someone living in, in Douglas, per se, wouldn't be a good fit for Millville. By the time we get here, you know, we're well into the fire. So, we try to attract local people in Millville. We're stable. Our workforce right now is stable. We had a couple of people come back to work, they were all injured. Uh, we lost one or two people, simply moved away. And once they move too far, then they're no val, they're no value to us. So, right now, we're stable. The last couple of calls we've had, we're averaging maybe five to six people on turnout, which is good. Uh, we could actually staff two trucks when that happens. So, Quint is fully operational now and the tanker's doing well. And I'll comment on the other tanker, on the water tanker that we had to, um, take it out of service because it's simply too old. They couldn't spend any more money on it. So, going through the fire service, they found us, uh, an, um, a water tanker from the National Guard, which is in absolutely wonderful condition. It's like brand new, it truly is. I took a ride last week up to upstate New York, uh, with Deputy Chief Farno to look at the truck. It's in great shape. Because we're a municipality, through the government, there's no cost. So, given to us. Uh, the only issue was it was located at Fort Drum, which is five hours away. Uh, I made the decision not to drive it back because if I drive it back and something happens on Route eighty-four or the Mass Pike, it's a big truck, so it's not a, you can't tow it with a small tow truck. It costs me more money if something happened. So, the cost through Brian, um, someone he knows, is twelve hundred dollars to bring it from Fort Drum, to bring it to Millville. So, we're making plans to do that now, but that guarantees us it gets to the door. I mean, they're confident, it's a beautiful truck. It, I, I know it would make it, but then again, there's governor on it. I think it only goes fifty miles per hour, so it would take me two days to get back home. So, I figured, let's, let's.
You'd be missed.
Yeah, you'd be missed. So, let's trail it back. So, that's my proposal. We haven't done it yet, but that's what we like to do. Uh, but we certainly need the water tanker because our two trucks, roughly, you know, fifteen hundred, five hundred gallons and twenty-five hundred gallons, that's three thousand gallons of water. We use that in about a minute or two. So, this, this, uh, water tank truck would be a great asset, simply gonna replace the one that we have. So. And the, the good thing is with this particular piece of equipment, the government's changed their rules. Uh, in two years from now, we own it. It never has to go back anywhere, like the one we currently have. We have to give that back to the government. They're gonna come and pick it up. Uh, this particular truck in two years, if we don't like it, we can sell it. It's all ours. So, I think it's a great, great benefit. So, that's it for that. So, we're going back to this study. It is what it is. It's been out there for a, a long time. The study's relatively new, but the concern about, uh, on-call firemen, that concern's been out there for a while. Uh, simply there's not as much interest as there was when they were small towns with the real, you know, um, brotherhood of being a fireman or a police officer, but a fireman specifically because they don't get paid only when they respond to calls. So, think about it, put all that training in, all this time, and you know, and you wait, you wait to get a call, it could take a year. We don't have too many structural fires in town, so if they're actually to have a structural fire, it could be a year, two, three years away, other than false alarms. So, that's why this study's there. And a lot of the problems are looking outside the box to, um, merge, uh, merge on-call people. So, there's a whole bunch of different ideas out there and that's where we stand with this report. Thank you.
So, my question unrelated. What did they do to the fire truck to win first place in the parade in Mendon?
Lights, did you see it?
I saw a couple of pictures, but I was just.
She, you're speaking both to Quint.
I'm talking, yes.
But I'll have to say it, not to them prejudice, it's one of the best-looking fire trucks in the valley. It really is. And they threw some lights on the ladder. And we won a nice trophy for that truck.
First place, right?
First place. So, um.
Well, tell them, good job.
Great, that's great. Print a copy and frame it. It's gotta hang somewhere. We have the trophy, so the trophy's pretty good. And by the way, we'll be out, I think it's next week, driving through all the town with that same. Yeah, with the fire truck. We'll put that on Facebook, too. So, we'll be out with the truck again.
Already flowing out there.
Yeah, this is the status, probably the last status report under Quint. Uh, the final repairs were made to it, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Um, unless something breaks along the way, everything breaks in time. Uh, the truck right now is a hundred percent and it's, um, it's a nice, nice truck. So, that was, um, an adventure that was well worth it, um, for Millville. Did you get the vehicle back from Worcester? Engine two, was it? Yep, that came back. Uh, I gave you an update on that like, um, like a month ago. Unfortunately, the price tag on engine two was nineteen thousand dollars. I did speak to, uh, Ms. Callahan about that the other day. Financially, you know, that hit from my budget, it really can't occur because it wipes out my maintenance budget. So, we're gonna have to look for some type of transfer, uh, to replenish my maintenance, uh, line item because it, it took the money out of that line item, so we're running in red in the negative. But things are gonna break and things have to be serviced now through June. So, we're gonna have to find that nineteen thousand dollars to put back into that line item. That's all. That was, you know, that was, that was engine two. No, that was engine two, we didn't anticipate that.
It was that easy.
It's something that, you know, rotted and no one could see it because it's underneath the truck. You can't see a frame. And it's a, a double frame, it has two pieces of steel, uh, pressed together and it rotted in between the two plates.
Yeah.
So, it needed like the entire frame. So, and I, I did expect, um, I went to Hardfield two occasions just to check out their work. And when I tell you they had the entire engine taken apart, they had the entire engine taken apart. So, that's why the price was so high. But now that truck is done, too. So, right now, we have, we have two decent vehicles. It's your last, you know, fifteen, seventeen years. So, that's a report on that.
I have one question, um, about the part-time on-call firefighters. Do they have to pay when they, uh, go to the academy?
No, actually, uh, the program I have, if you go to the academy and you pass, um, we give you, I believe it's one thousand dollars. If you attend and you passed the practical part, meaning the climbing the ladders and the holes, and if you passed the state-written exam, we give you fifteen hundred dollars.
So, they're getting compensated then for going?
Yeah. It's not, if you break it down per hour, it's just less than minimum wage. It's, um, I forget how many hours it is, but it's three days a week.
Do they pay to enroll?
No.
So, it's not a reimbursement, so.
Right, right. And before, um, the practice was they paid, they were paying as they would go, but then if someone dropped out, uh, which a few did, uh, we didn't get any benefit from that, or if they didn't pass the test. So, now the incentive is go, pass, you get X amount of dollars. And if you get the certification statewide, you get a little bit more. So, it seems to help. But that's it. We have a line item for that, too, that allows me to send maybe three guys per year if we had to. But we've advertised quite a bit and you can't get the advocates.
No.
Just can't get the advocates. Um, so, that's all for that. So, if anyone watching wants to become a on-call fireman, please stop by and see us. We're more than welcome.
Might need to attach a sign on the seventeenth.
We've had signs, we've had workshops for.
Before Santa Claus.
Yeah, and we've done a lot. We've got some young people that are really interested, uh, junior firefighters, so they're, they're coming up. So, I think right now we're pretty stable. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public forum. Moving on to correspondence, uh, regional dispatch, uh, letters. We've, we've signed the agreement with, uh, Tom Mendon. And, uh, the Blackstone officials have been notified by letter that we're regionalized with them. Mendon?
Basically, that initially was at the request of, uh, the state, E nine-one-one, to continue our relationship with Mendon. The, uh, cops hiring program, number, uh, US Justice Department. Unfortunately, uh, Trish always does a good job, but, uh, we can overlook this year. Uh, but they, they're encouraging us to try next year. Liquor licenses, aid, uh, alcohol beverage control. We've changed their procedures in terms of, uh, payment methods. And, uh, I'm personally, I need help from the administrator to identify the, the procedural issues now in, in the payment.
Well, this is in particular for, um, any kinds of payment that is, um, sent to the, um, alcoholic beverage commission. Uh, for new applicants in particular, uh, most of the, uh, renewals, the, the actual monies monetary come to us and we do not necessarily send anything to them. So, that's for new, like this past year, we had Marty's Fine Wines would have not been able to, um, give us a paper check. They would've had to go online and we would've had to show a copy of that receipt. So, it's one of the small things, since we're doing liquor licenses tonight, um, they, they typically around this time of year. Uh, last year it was, uh, going to a full-scale, uh, electronic submission of all of the license holders after you sign, um, hopefully this evening. I have to enter that in, uh, for anybody who, um, will continue as a license holder, uh, within Millville. And the other thing was they were changing up their address. So, they try to keep us up to date, but, uh, last year it was they went to a totally electronic format for actual, um, license, uh, holders in renewals. Now, it's also payments are also changing to that.
We'll be ready for that.
We'll be ready for that.
Next on the agenda is the, uh, proposal to cap municipal ambulance fees eliminated. There's some legislation going about in the Senate is, uh, rejected, uh, not capping.
I thought it was important. Uh, Chief and I had had discussions, and I know I put it before your board, that that was something that was being entertained and, uh, the Mass Municipal Association was asking for, uh, municipalities that in particular, uh, would be opposed to fee capping provisions for our ambulance fees. Uh, so, uh, as far as I know, that's been eliminated and that was a good, um, news for us. We didn't want that.
Still not over though.
No, it never is. There'll always be a challenge. Someone's always.
It's going to the House, uh, early next year, going back.
New business, uh, parking ban, snow emergency parking ban, December first, twenty-seventeen to April first, twenty-eighteen. Please keep all vehicles off town roads during a winter storm or snow event. If a parked vehicle obstructs the snow removal, snow plowing, salting, or sanding operations of the town, the vehicle may be towed at the owner's expense at the discretion of the Millville Police Department, per order of the Millville Board of Selectment.
So, I make a motion to, um, accept or adopt.
Adopt the ban.
It's been a long day, um, to adopt the snow emergency parking ban.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Annual license renewals.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, once again, this is that time of year, uh, that we spoke of earlier in the meeting, uh, in which we renew, uh, license, uh, holders. Uh, they apply back to the town. They have a lengthy application process. They have many documents they have to submit. We have a, a check-off, uh, list that we go through, uh, and it includes everything from whether the business has a current, uh, business certificate to whether they have workers' compensation, whether they've had training, um, especially with regards to the alcohol license holders, whether they're employees, um, regardless of whether they're in an establishment that serves, um, alcohol or whether they're in a, uh, a store retail facility. Uh, they have other documents, um, that includes, um, such things as showing that they do have, not only workers' comp, but they also have, um, insurance coverage, uh, for their buildings. Uh, we also have inspections that take place. Uh, the inspections are quite thorough. They're done by, um, depending on what type of, um, license holder they are, they're typically done by our fire, um, uh, department, then by our police, uh, department, our border health, and also our building commissioner. And, um, with, uh, caveat that we have a new building commissioner, uh, who had not necessarily gone into some of these, uh, buildings, uh, and facilities, I will say that there have been some, um, notations done by our building commissioner of things that he wanted to see fixed, um, in the majority of, of the places he visited. Uh, some included wanting to have an extra exit sign, wanting to have, um, you know, something, um, that, that was easily fixable. Uh, we had one particular, uh, establishment where they had, uh, a boiler that was considered, um, uh, in need of being actually removed and it was still connected and there was concern that, um, if they didn't need it, they should, uh, disconnect it, things like that. So, um, I will say it was a little, much more thorough on the building commissioner's side. Having said that, that, um, from what I, um, understand from our building commissioner, that, uh, most have already, um, gone into compliance with the suggestions that they wanted, uh, from the building department. Uh, we have one, the new establishment, Marty's, uh, Fine Wines, that, um, apparently had gotten some, um, issuance through the Board of Health, uh, to do some aspect of their business, whether they weren't just selling prepackaged food, but had moved towards a deli. Um, the building commissioner was not aware of all that, um, so they are working together to try to rectify that. Um, having said that, uh, everything is in order, uh, for each one of these establishments. I did give you a memorandum, um, in there with the actual, uh, license numbers and, um, and if you move to approve those of this evening, which I would suggest that we do, knowing that I've gone through, uh, and checked off all the things that they're supposed to have and things that we wanted to have, um, to make them compliant, I would, um, you know, encourage the board to approve them.
On approval of these licenses, um, do, do we have to take these one at a time or?
I think we could, unless anyone wants to hold them, we could just read them all off and then do it as one sweeping.
All righty. Mill Tavern Pizza, common Vic license. George's Variety Store, all alcoholic retail liquor license. Century Discount Liquors.
Nope, Marty's Fine Wine.
Yeah, I, I gave you the wrong one, Joe. I am sorry. You didn't have that one, you took it early.
I think that's probably the only thing that's changed.
Yeah, that's the only thing that changed.
Marty's Fine Wine, all, uh, alcohol, uh, retail liquor license. Potbelly Pub, all alcohol liquor license, common Vic license. Pool Table License, automatic amusement, amusement device license, entertainment license. Polish American Club, all Ameri, uh, all alcohol liquor license, common Vic license. Pool Table License, automatic amusement, uh, device license, entertainment license. Uxbridge Auto, Class Two License. Millville Motors, Class Two License.
Anyone wanna hold any?
Any hold, no holds. I'll hear motion to, uh, approve all, uh, the establishment's name. Your second.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. There'll be a lot of signing this evening. Always is for each one of those.
Item number eight on the agenda is a joint, uh, budget meeting and is proposed for January tenth at six P M. at the high school. This is, uh, looking at, um, a three-year plan. The difference this year is that, uh, town, town officials will be involved with this, with the school district, um, formulating a three-year plan.
Just, um, so you know, the superintendent had, um, we had had a meeting, uh, the previous month. We talked about potentially, uh, doing a first joint. we talked about potentially doing a first joint budget roundtable at the end of November, and I had been in touch with the superintendent, and it seemed that that might be a little bit more difficult of a task to pull all the different boards together. So he has put out January 10th, unless there's some kind of major obstacle to the majority of the board, I could correspond back to explain that that might be okay. So I don't know, if you can take a look at your calendars, let me know if there's a major issue in advance, but I'll be able to get back to him if I can get some input from you.
So if you have any, I would suggest that by the end of, by Wednesday evening, that if you, you know, you could go forward if you haven't heard objection from anyone.
Okay, that sounds good.
Selectmen's forum, I had one thing on that, I had, I'm considering, or had considered resigning from the Green Community, and get the end-of-year report. And the good news is, on December 7th, we're gonna see a final draft on that, and we're gonna approve it at that time, if everything's all in order. And I'll scale down my involvement in Green Community at that time. Next is, anyone else in the Selectmen's forum? Town administrators' report.
Yeah, so I'll start out with the MEMA. As you know, we had a pretty significant storm event in October. I know that MEMA Director, Deputy Fire Chief, Steve Furno, worked very closely with our Highway Director in trying to clear our streets and help to restore both order, in terms of power, as quickly as possible, in working with all different aspects of trying to keep our roads safe, and our utilities moving in the right direction. We were asked by the state to actually quantify our expenses and costs related to that. Our Highway Surveyor contributed, along with Alex Malali, who's our tree warden, in keeping close, accurate records, to make sure that if there was a possibility, that we may receive federal assistance or reimbursement for that. The paperwork did go in, Deputy Chief Furno did a good job on that. It would be, have close to about $10,000 of incurred expenses that we were hoping we might get reimbursed for. Unfortunately, as you can see in the correspondence, the state has given back that the overall total cost that the state incurred relative to this emergency that was declared for the Commonwealth is not going to get federal reimbursement. So we are on the hook for that. Obviously, we will always answer the call in the middle of emergency, but it would have been great if we could have. But we're gonna be that much more prepared as we go forward in making sure we accurately keep track of the expenses the town incurs when it's faced with any kind of emergency or disaster.
Reading the, reading the email, the whole, our whole district was, I mean, it's what, $9.5 million for federal, and we were only collectively at $4.5, so...
Right. So that's why they do say that it's really important for municipalities to keep track of every dollar that they spend. And some municipalities do a better job on that than others, and some don't even actually quantify and give back so that they have the documentation to support the need for it. So unfortunately, some of that number might have been low because people didn't respond quickly, because this was a quick turnaround to actually put the numbers together. So we did do that, I was hoping that other communities might have been able to contribute to a higher cost value so that we could have gotten some kind of remuneration, but we did not. The second on the town administrator update, it was to let you know that for the demolition grant of the Central Street Mug Pub property, one of the things after our town meeting that we needed to do is to get the deed in lieu of foreclosure recorded. We had some back and forth, one of the things, we had to make sure that our minute, minutes provided at town meeting were going to be incorporated and attached to the deed, so we had to go back and go to the town council and the town clerk's office to make sure that was acceptable. Once that was acceptable, they then needed to make sure we had no other financial encumbrances and liens with the property. We provided that, and as you can see, it finally has been recorded, and we have a copy of it in your packet. Having said that much, I also wanted to talk just briefly about the fact that we did have several bids or proposals to be considered by contractors to demolish the building. One of them came early on in the process, after I had submitted the grant. I can tell you that the price ranges for these proposals went from about $31,500, $31,500, all the way up to $39,000. Obviously, we want to take the lowest proposed bid, and that will go to Tatro Incorporated, which you see in your packet. And I've reached out to them, and I expect to be able to organize a fast start date with them. And I'm gonna be working that out with both the chief and my highway survey to make sure we can coordinate whatever needs to be done for details, because obviously, we may have to close the street when they take down the building.
And they're coming back in the spring to take care of the park and lot and the...
Right. One of the things, I talked with the grant program, and explained after talking with Brian about the fact that we do have asphalt that is gonna be also removed, because that can be costly if you've gotta take that out, and a potential buyer in the future for a request for proposals that will go out from our end, may not want to have that as an additional expense to remove. But knowing that it's late in the season, and we could get heavy rains in the spring, it could cause a lot of mud and messiness. So I did speak with them, they did say that we can incorporate the actual aspects for landscaping into it, maybe even also fence replacement to spruce up the area, and as long as, you know, we've noted that, there won't be a problem. This is a reimbursement program anyway, so that if it's already put within the proposal, that we will get reimbursed for it. And of course, we're looking at the final, you know, expenditure date of the end of December. So I think we're right on the money for it, and we've been saying we're gonna be able to meet the deadline, and so far, so good, everything is, yeah.
That would be nice.
And by the way, there was an analysis done inside the property, inside the actual home, to ensure that there was no asbestos, or other things that would actually have increased the cost, because some of the initial bids were not sure if it was, because they couldn't see it. So that's another good thing for us, we didn't have that on top of everything.
No hazardous material.
No.
Right, no. So that should go smoothly. The next item on the agenda is streetlights. I do see a highway survey here, I'm glad he's here, because there's one item, the road acceptances that we did at town meeting for the two roads, obviously, now the town is taking over that responsibility, and we have been contacted by National Grid and also Alfonso Realtors, or Alfonso Incorporated, about looking for us to take over the highway, not the highway lights, the streetlights. And there's about 10 of them, and I have spoken with National Grid and corresponded with them, so that we will then be taking that on for the actual properties associated with what we accepted at town meeting for road acceptances. And then the other thing about streetlights, as you'll see in your packet, there is a actual request that was coming from several residents related to ones that live in the Hill Street and Lorraine Lane areas, and they were talking about the street corner intersection as being very dark or dimly lit for buses, in particular for students waiting for buses. So I'd spoken with Sandra Poveo, and also with our highway survey, and said that we would do our due diligence in trying to ascertain whether it really was, you know, a safety hazard, and whether it warranted a need for the actual light to go in. And so, I don't know if you'd like to say anything at all, Brian, but he did do the assessment for us.
I went up there on two different occasions, one being morning hours and one being evening. The end result is, it is a street intersection. I firmly believe that our street intersection should be lit up for public safety, responding to an incident, not only for the kids waiting for the bus, because that changes with the time too. The daylight savings time, when a kid's out there, it's not always gonna be lit, the light goes on when it needs to and goes off the same, but it does warrant a streetlight being installed there, at Hill Street and Lorraine Lane.
So I know when we turned off all the lights in town, about 20 years ago, one of the criteria is where every intersection would be lit. Bad corners, you know, dangerous intersections, and things of that sort, so I agree with you. And I know that, and that, I was gonna piggyback on the road acceptance, I'm not sure what the lighting is in there, but I think we may want to consider the same criteria for the developments that we take on, and let the individuals know that they can have a streetlight if they want, but they are, they pay for it. And we've had a few people in town.
Some of those lights, going back to the roads you accepted, you're not, we didn't just accept two roads with 10 lights. We were very fortunate that we accepted many roads years ago, and we didn't incur all the streetlights until now. Finalizing the development, we're now getting all of the streets, which we haven't had for this time. I could tell you, the other developments coming up here in the next year or so that are gonna be looking for acceptance, there are no streetlights throughout that development. Whether the planning board entertains anything on that in the future, it's up to them.
Do we have an updated count on the streetlights that we own in town?
I do not at this time.
I, I know, we have it somewhere.
They provide a listing.
I just don't have it off the top of my head, yeah, that we would have that. I don't know how you proceeded in the past, I know National Grid, we can have that conversation about actually putting a light in, but I think it's still important that your board ratifies that as a direction, because it is an incurred cost that the town will take on by actually putting it up there. So if you would like me to proceed to actually make that, this happen, I would be more than happy to do that, but I think it would be important just to...
Bless you.
God bless you.
Thank you.
I'll hear that as a motion to accept the streetlight.
Hill Street.
Hill Street.
So moved.
Your second.
Second up.
Rule.
Aye.
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 The next item on the town administrator update is the IT-related transfer that we just had take place over Thanksgiving. As you know, in our previous meetings, we talked about the fact that Ashton Technology was no longer going to be archiving our emails, and we were going to have to move in a direction by December 1st. I'm very pleased to say that that transfer has taken place. The majority of all people's accounts, email accounts, have been transferred to the Google Suite Cloud. One thing that some people may still not have done, if they had an email on our, you know, current server, that if you didn't give the IT director, Paul McKenzie, your actual password, they created a password for you, and all you have to do is actually, you know, speak with him or speak with me, I give you the password that they gave you temporarily, and then you can go on and actually create your new password and/or your old password, whatever one you want to do. But you have to use this password to get on. So there are some different boards or commission chairs that may not have done that yet, so just call myself, or I can give you the connection to Paul McKenzie, and we'll get you set up.
Took me about an hour.
With, oh, you...
You'd get into my email.
Oh, really? Okay, it didn't take me that long.
I also have like 950 messages in my box.
Okay. I don't know what to say about that, you're a popular person in town. So the next and last item on the town administrator update is semi-annual stipends. You'll see an actual memo that's coming from our collective treasurer, just to remind board and committees and chairman to make sure that they stop by the treasurer's office to arrange a time for any necessary forms that they need, if they're new members or new appointees, and if not, then their normals, yeah, will be the same. They'll, you'll either get it in terms of a payment for December 14th, or December 21st, for a date that will come out for December 28th. So if the vouchers get turned in, they'll get processed. And that's it for the town administrator update, just to remind you that your next regular meeting is December 18th, but you do have...
Oh, there's signatures.
Yes, right.
Tax rate.
On Wednesday, you have a tax classification hearing, and prior to that, you have the special board meeting at 6 o'clock.
So we'll do signatures, and then adjourn.
If you want to start, you can try that one that way.
Mr. Chairman.
Chair.
Chair.
Huh?
There's a question, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'm on this private floor, because we've already opened it up to...
Public forum?
However, I am here because at your last meeting, you indicated that you were going to review the constitution and bylaws of the council on aging, and that's why I came. I thought perhaps you were here to, I had to be here to help with that group. But obviously, we didn't put it on the agenda, as you thought you might. Is it going to be discussed at any time?
Well, I've, I've been working on policies and procedures in general, I'm trying to put...
But these are policies and procedures that were accepted and adopted by the council, and also by the voters of the town of Millville. So none of that could be changed without...
No, you have to go to town meeting.
Yeah. So I just wanted to be here, if you had anything you wanted.
No.
That's why I'm here.
All right.
Because you did say it was going to be on the agenda. I hate to keep reminding you of that, but that's why I'm here.
Did I specify for this night?
Probably not.
No.
We've been working on that in a workshop, on other policies and procedures.
I know I'm not on the council any longer, but I still have an interest in it. I have been on there for, since we reopened, and so I'd like to follow it, if I could.
Okay.
All right, that's why I'm here.
All right.
I told you it was a lot.
Oh, oh.
Joe, underneath each one of those, in that packet, yeah, they have several different licenses, yeah. He'll write his grant, yeah.
I'm gonna need to wear that brace when I go to bed tonight.
I know, traffic tunnel, we might have after this. I know, trap tunnel you might have after this. Tommy, you do that one. Sorry.
Free pens don't work.
Oh, I know, I have a lot of them that are like that.
Throw them away.
I try, but sometimes, you know, you bring them down and somebody's throwing them out.
Somebody helps pick them up.
That's just for Jennifer.
Here's to you.
Okay. Do we ask?
Say.
Do we ask? Yeah, I don't know.
I didn't notice. We have all signatures. Our next regular scheduled meeting is December 18th, 2017. We have a special one on.
Wednesday, you have tax classification.
Yes.
And then a meeting right before that to discuss new growth and things like that.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Rule.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.